Drew, catch up a little bit. Tonight is Monday, the fifteenth of July. It is 7:01 PM. This town council meeting will start with the pledge of allegiance. I'll stand and remove your covers, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like everyone to please remain standing. Had some tragedy over the weekend. Doesn't matter what political party you're with or not, what you believe or you don't. But there's a life, there's several, you know, lives affected through this tragedy. So I'd like to just have a moment of silence for that and also remind people that we are people, we're human. We all bleed red blood. We all care. We're all passionate. We're in this together. And I think that it's very important to remember that, remember why we're here. So with that, we'll enter a moment of silence. Please be seated. Thank you. All right, so we'll open up with public comment. I think Chief Bernard, you want to roll in? Roll in your order real quick. Sit down, stand up, stand up, sit down.
No, we're gonna stand. So, good evening, Town Council, citizens in the room. I'm pleased to introduce to you two new members of London Dairy Police Department effective today. So I'd like to take a moment and introduce you. To my left, right here, is Phil McPherson. Phil has four years of full-time experience with a local police department. He is a New Hampshire resident. Fun fact about Phil, he and I both started our law enforcement careers as marine patrol officers. So that's kind of a nice little fun fact for he and I to share going forward. To his left is Chance Spinney. Chance Spinney comes to us as well. Certified New Hampshire Law Enforcement Officer with five years' experience, served in the Hampshire National Guard. And he also worked part-time as well before his full-time enlistment at his prior PD. Why I do this is to show and to echo what I've been saying all along since day one. These two fine men could have picked any one of the over 200 law enforcement agencies in New Hampshire, any one of them. Any one of them would have been happy to have them. They chose us. They chose your community. They chose to work for the men and women of LPD. So, once again, as I said several months back, when we had five people we brought here, here's two more fine examples. We are doing something right. Your support helps us in recruiting. And I want to thank you all for taking the moment and the time that it takes to hear us bring these people forward to you. We know you have a busy agenda, and I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to introduce these two fine men. So gentlemen, if you could, just make your rounds up there, introduce yourself and say hello.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for your service to our community and to our state. So, thank you.
So Chief, was one of them going to the academy?
No, they're both certified.
They're both certified?
They both are.
Just checking. Thanks for saving us money.
No kidding. You know, we're not one to brag, but let's just call it 300,000.
Just wanted to point that out.
Hey, we're about saving. We're about helping out. I just want to say again, thank you very much. We appreciate it. As you guys know, we're working on our numbers to the PD. We're currently, I believe, at 61 or 62 of the 67, so we're getting there. We have some more inquiries as we speak. So we're gonna entertain some more certified in the next week or two. So I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're in public comment.
Mr. Chair, can I open up a comment?
Absolutely.
This committee asked me at the last meeting to contact Beautify London Dairy. So I met up with Joy, and the committee was very understaffed, basically March, April, May. In April and May, they weren't even able to have a meeting because we didn't have enough members. So between the Town Council and Beautify London Dairy and the volunteers, we now have five full-time staff members, and we have one alternate, and we have one alternate opening. So now the committee has fully staffed and can get back to work. So right now, they are planning on having one fall cleanup in the fall. They are also gonna see how this might work out. They're gonna try to have two depot stations. They're considering a depot station at the library where they would have a vest, gloves, picker, and you could kind of check it out in the library, pick trash at any time you wanted, and return it to the library. That's one of the options they're looking at. Or they may have a depot here at Town Hall where you could come and pick up the stuff and check it out. So the people that wanted to pick in July or August, they could pick any time they wanted during the year. We're always looking for more volunteers, so if anybody would like to volunteer, they're always looking for that. But as of right now, the committee is back to staff. They're planning on having one fall cleanup and getting back to having hopefully three cleanups in April. So hopefully, we're gonna be back, back the way it used to be. So that's the update I have at the moment.
Awesome. Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I would like if the council could have an open, public discussion about the warrant articles that we've discussed and just identify the next steps to that. I think, you know, we've had our time to talk about them, and I think the people that voted for these, we need to be able to have at least a next step. So if we could have a discussion on that, I would be grateful.
Do you want me to tell you traditionally how it would be handled, or do you just want to talk about it?
I mean, we can either or, just to...
So generally, what's been the past practice is, is that, you know, when we start to go into budget season in like late September, we start giving direction to the town manager of what we're looking to see going forward. Since these warrant articles have, will have a legal cost tied to them. So, and again, as I've stated in the past, I'm not against opening the charter, but I've gotten estimates from legal that it could be upwards of $50,000 to go through the whole process. So generally, what happens is, and another thing is, we don't usually do it during the summer because everybody's on vacation, they're not paying attention. So once people are back in school and it's, you know, mid-September, late September, generally, the council starts talking about like, what's the budget season look like? What are the warrant articles that we are looking for? What do we need help from the state from? And we start generally asking all those questions. That's traditionally how it's been done. It's worked pretty well. I thought that was probably what was gonna happen anyway.
Okay.
But that's generally the process if we follow the past practice. I mean, and again, we can go through it and you can make a decision, yay, nay, do it, don't do it, you know, accept citizens petitions. But by the time we go to budget overview on a Saturday morning in November, you sort of have a pretty good idea of like, you know, what they're gonna present and what the whole package starts to look like. And unlike these citizens petitions, which had no public hearings, then you would have public hearings. And you would get, you know, input from the, from everyone about like, okay, well, what do you want to do? And listen to those things. It may not be fast enough for some people, or may not be what some people would be looking for, but it is the way the past practice has worked. That's just one suggestion.
Yeah. And I think with that information, I think, you know, we have public comment at the beginning of these where people are able to come and speak. And if that's not a good enough process, they can speak on that, or we can... Do you guys have any other thoughts on that?
I'm not objecting to it at all. I mean, I just follow the...
No, no. I think that was good information for the public, too, to be able to hear.
And I think referencing, if I, did you want to say something? I think referencing the town manager's memo that he had produced a couple meetings prior regarding on how to open the charter and such. Regardless of that, if I understand your memo correctly, it has to go on about a town ballot. Is that correct?
Correct. And depending on whether it's a charter amendment or a charter revision, you're talking about potential... I mean, the warrant article differs, or the warrant articles differ. If you're talking about opening the charter, so to speak, or revising the whole charter, then you're electing a charter commission and it triggers this years-long process. If you're talking about amending discrete aspects...
At least two years.
Two years, because you're electing that commission that's gonna serve until the next election. The charter, whatever, and the charter commission could come forward and say, "We don't need any changes." But whatever changes they recommend, then go on the ballot. And so, yeah, you're talking close to two years before those changes would take effect. So...
Or you could put the question on the ballot, asking if they want to do it. And then if they want to do it, you can elect a charter commission. So it's, that's why it all starts to cost a lot of money.
Correct.
And I think that one thing that you had publicly brought up is there's a couple things that you felt that like, didn't need to be a charter amendment and stuff. And to that point, I think, I recall you recently briefing me at least, and actually, and the council, about your efforts on recording the meetings, to in fact, even our most recent meeting, and that was right prior to this, was recorded and will be broadcasted delayed, but it was video-recorded as well.
Yes. And so, you know, as I've stated publicly before, since I took over, I've been generally supportive of recording as many meetings as possible. Since the ballot vote in March, I've taken that as additional support for the policy that I've been pursuing. And as the council knows, we're pretty much recording everything that comes along at this point. I'm not gonna say that there isn't a spare meeting that maybe is missed or what have you, but to your point, Mr. Chair, we recorded traffic safety for the first time in my memory, just before this meeting tonight. I can tell you that, you know, one of the, one of the authorities that I have as town manager is to control town facilities. And I can tell you that for as long as I'm serving as town manager, if public meetings are happening in a town facility, they're gonna be recorded going forward. So you can amend the charter to say that if you'd like to, but that's what I'm gonna be doing going forward.
Thank you.
Any other input? Thank you.
Yeah, I think that was good. I just, I want to give people more information on this so that they know. I mean, we can have conversations, but just so, you know, people can see, can hear it and process what's going on. So thank you for that.
And thank you for the efforts from the town staff for heading in that direction.
Thank you for the council's support. It wouldn't be possible without the council's support.
Okay. Anything else from the public? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. All right, resignation of Jim Lucel from the Recreation Commission.
Motion to accept.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Chair votes in affirmative. Thank you very much, Jim, for your dedicated service to our community, and we wish you the best. Interviews for Heritage and public appointments of Demolition Review Committee. So...
Point of order.
If I can, real quick, or is it all right?
It's okay with me.
It was brought to my attention right before the meeting, and I think this is what Counselor Farrell's point of order is gonna be, that the demolition review committee was disbanded many years prior. John, I know you have...
Slight correction. I don't know if it was ever disbanded. It was...
Resolved?
It was just left open.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So with that, I think I personally have some concerns about appointing people without an updated charge and stuff. I'm not speaking for the whole council, just for me personally. Do you, do you want to present on that? Do you have someone to present on that, or...
So, Chair, if you're comfortable speaking to that, the only thing I will say is I believe that the... I believe that there are some aspects of this that may appear in the zoning ordinance?
Yes. So the Demolition Review Committee is established by Zoning Ordinance 9.3, which states certain specific conditions which would activate the review by the Demolition Review Committee. So, you know, the Demolition Delay Committee predates my time, but the Demolition Review Committee exists statutorily in town through zoning ordinance 9.3.
Okay.
It lists several conditions under which the Demolition Review Committee should be employed, and it lists four specific criteria.
So there's triggers?
Yes, that would enact it. And once those triggers take place, there's five business days to get the information to the Demolition Review Committee. So it's actually if you go under Planning and Economic Development under Departments. Yeah, okay.
So have these conditions just not occurred yet in a long time that we haven't heard from this committee?
I can't speak to that specific thing. My joking line around Town Council is that I'm every, around Town Hall, is that I'm everybody's favorite compliance killjoy. So I was asked to look into the Demolition Review Committee, and, nope, Sue, that's okay. Thank you. Nope. So I was asked to look into this and was asked to help reconstitute it. It was posted two weeks ago. And so you can see there, it requires at least three members, two alternates, at least two need to be Heritage Commission members, and one needs to be an at-large member of the public. Those are the criteria which would make demolition fall under this ordinance. And then 9.3.3 gives the four triggers, the beginning of 9.3.3, which is basically application for a demolition permit. Can you go back the other way? Thank you. A building permit involving demolition, a site plan review with demolition, or a formal written application for demolition. So as you can see there, that, once that happens, you have five business days to do certain things. So it makes sense to have it constituted and their charges laid out within this zoning ordinance.
So who brought this up? Because it hasn't come up in years, and we've been demoing buildings all over town.
So I think that there is likely to be a review at the Heritage Committee next week regarding the barn structure at Tulich Field. And so whatever the outcome of that is, the council should be aware that the Heritage Commission has authority, has some authority at least over that structure. The council has other authority over that structure. I think that the suggestion is to have this committee in place to give the community and the council maximum flexibility to respond to any authorization or request to demolish a structure at Tulich Field. I'm not saying that you want to exercise that authority, but I'm saying that we don't have anybody appointed to it, and the next council meeting isn't occurring until after the Heritage Commission meeting.
So let's say we, let's say we didn't look into this and we didn't have it, and it came in front of the Heritage Commission. What would happen?
I'd have to ask legal, that scenario. I think that...
Because, you know, we didn't know, we didn't know it existed, you know, and we didn't have it. So, and there, other things have been demoed.
Correct. It's a... My understanding is it is in, the town does not have to choose to invoke it. In other words...
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Correct. So it doesn't necessarily follow that there would be some action by the Demolition Review Committee, but without a constituted committee, there will not be action.
Feels messy.
The council can always hold a special meeting if needed to fill the committee if the occasion arises as well.
Whenever we rush into something, we always seem to get it wrong.
Yeah.
That's, I'm indifferent.
I've been doing it for 15 years. Do you want me to come up?
Go ahead. Come on up. Just your name and address, please.
Sue Jodri, 23, Peabody Row. So I've been doing it. I started with, I don't know how many there were, five, six of us, I guess, and I cut down to just me. So I've been doing it a long, 12, 15 years, maybe. I'm on the Heritage. Been there 15 years, historical 30 years, and a native of town. So I've been doing it by myself. And then Libby sent me the rules or whatever of it, and when and how to call a public meeting and do the 30-day delay. So she sent me all that.
So, Mr. Town Manager, thank you very much.
All done?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yep.
So, Mr. Town Manager, so if I hear you correctly, the request is to fill the remaining vacancies on this, the Demolition Review Committee. There are four criteria or triggers, or there's triggers that essentially would allow the town's more maneuverability to exercise what is, the powers that are given to us by statute and by ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And essentially, tonight, I mean, I agree with John. I mean...
I'm indifferent to it. So whatever you guys want to do.
Just a quick question. Does this committee have two members currently? It says on the sheet here that David and Sue?
So those are up...
Sue is here.
So those are up for confirmation. So I put those on there for confirmation. So in doing my research, the records I found for the Demolition Delay Committee suggested that it had been, held formal meetings twice in the past decade, once in 2014 for 48 Perkins Road, and once in 2019 for 5 Chase Road.
Okay.
At those times, I currently do not have, the only person for whom I have an oath is Sue, but it's from before, when she was on the Heritage Commission. So I currently don't have any members oaths appropriately for their slot.
Okay.
So in 2019, Sue and David took their role on the 5 Chase, and they are the current members of the Heritage Commission. I spoke with Chris Kenny, and he suggested that if they were happy to continue in that role, that he was happy to have them do so. And then two weeks ago, we posted four members of the public for which we received one application.
The other thing I will say, Mr. Chair, is that, and some people may disagree with me, but, you know, it's my view that this is a committee of exceedingly limited jurisdiction. It has authority to essentially pause a pending demolition for 30 days, nothing more. And so while that 30 days may be valuable, if there's a surprise demolition of a structure that the community feels strongly about, I think that, you know, that there, there isn't a concern about this committee, you know, going rogue or doing, you know, things that it shouldn't be doing, because it essentially has one power or authority under our zoning ordinance and under statute, and that is to hit pause for 30 days on a demolition permit.
So is there any, I guess, anything that, if we don't do anything tonight, is there anything that legally that can come back on us as a council?
No. I would say no, because there isn't, the Heritage Commission hasn't approved anything at Tulich Field in terms of modifications or demolition. And as I said, if that occurs and the council feels that something needs to be done about it, the council can hold a meeting on 24 hours' notice, form this committee, and essentially do what is able to be done anyway.
So I'm sorry. So who's on, so right now, with Sue, with Sue and David, right, would be, would Sue and David go on to this meeting?
So Town Council appoints. Those are the two members of Heritage who are up for confirmation by the council. According to 9.3.1, the members are appointed by Town Council. Those were the ones suggested by Heritage. Has to be among the Heritage Commission members.
Okay. And then, then what is it? Then is it one person at large?
One person at large with two alternates. We only received one applicant for those three slots.
So my question would be is, is, and I'm trying to draw on some past information, the Heritage Commission can only have one member of the planning board serving on it?
Yes.
This is a subcommittee of the Heritage Commission. Does that same law apply?
It's not a subcommittee of the Heritage Commission per se. So, right there, so it's the outlines in the Demolition Review Committee and there are the definitions.
I think it's a, it's a committee appointed by the town.
Yes.
A committee created by the zoning ordinance.
By the Town Council.
So it's not a subcommittee of the Heritage Commission?
No, it just, it's stipulated in the zoning ordinance that it contain at least two Heritage Commission members.
So, Sean, what do you got to say?
The thing with this that just makes me nervous is going quick. I don't know that any of us up here are prepared to make a snap decision, but it's not something I... I think that the consequences of it are low. So I'm kind of indifferent. I just, it makes me a little nervous, but...
May I propose to the council, why don't we conduct the interviews? And then if needed, we could have a, you know, non-emergency meeting. Is it an emergency meeting? I could call up.
Yeah.
What's the term of the appointment?
It is not stipulated. So when we had posted it, we posted it as ad hoc, as the council determines for terms, until people resign.
So we can make it for 30 days so that we can get past this next piece and then figure it out after that?
You certainly could do that, yes. You can make appointments for any length of time that you would like. You can make it for 30 days, for 90 days, for whatever you, 90 days will get you through the summer session, whatever you guys want.
I'm amenable to that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So what do you need from us? So I know we have the interview for someone who wants to be on this. Do you need like a vote for 30 days to charge?
I need a vote when you appoint them for their term.
Okay.
Why don't we make this easy? Why don't we see if we can try to make this easy?
Yeah.
Why don't I just make a motion to appoint David, Sue, and the one applicant is Ann Champa?
Yes.
David, Sue, and Ann Champa for the next 90 days.
All right. So I have a motion from John.
I'll second it.
Second from Ron. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Please see the town clerk to be sworn in.
And then we can educate and step through this.
So, Ann, real quick, if I, if I can, I think I might address your question. And if I don't, you can come up. But what we're gonna do is we're gonna stand up the demolition committee. You just need to be sworn in by the town clerk. And then it's for a period, as John said, 90 days. And that'll allow the council some time to process, do some research, and then, you know, maybe get a, give a new charge. Does, did that answer what your question was?
No, I just want to interview, because I was involved with the last demo delay.
I don't see, and, right, and my point is, I don't know if there's a need to interview, because we had already appointed... You are appointed. You are on the Demolition Review Committee as of right now. You just need to be sworn in.
Right. If you're talking about Tulich Field Road also.
We're not.
We're not.
Okay.
Does that, that sound good? I just, we just need you to swear. And you're already on the, on the, on the committee. We're not discussing the Tulich Field as of right now. I think there's some information that your committee now will process and gather for the council, and I think that time might be a better time to present. Sound good?
Okay. I've been down this road before.
Yeah.
On numerous buildings in town.
There's no doubt.
And not just barns, but I just wanted to mention that. So if you have any questions, you can also ask me also.
Thank you very much, Ann. And congratulations. All right. Anyone else moving on? So, Mike, that was, that was it for that agenda item?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. That's correct, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, sir. Confirmation of planning board nominee to a one-year alternate position on the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this, on this item, and Tristan will correct me if I'm wrong on this, the planning board recommended Captain Patrick Cheatham following interviews, do I have that right? Yep. At the planning board last week, and I believe Patrick stepped out, but he is the recommended seat on that Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. I believe it's an alternate position.
So you just need a vote for confirmation?
That's correct. It's, it's the council's seat, essentially.
Motion to confirm?
Second.
I have a motion from John, a second from Ron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Chair votes in affirmative. Please see the town clerk to be sworn in? Yes.
It can hurt.
All right. Thank you. New business. Presentation and approval to move Community Choice Aggregation Program Plan to New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission. We have the Utilities Committee Chair, Mr. Lynn Wiles. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, councilors, Mr. Town Manager. My name's Lynn Wiles. I'm the chairman of the London Area Utilities Committee. With me tonight is Stuart Ormsby. Stuart is a vice president of Power Supply Strategies at Colonial Power Group, our chosen partner to move forward with the Community Aggregation Program. We're here tonight. We've been here a few times over the last few months. The last time we were here, we had a public hearing. We had the first of two public hearings to describe what the program is to solicit public input. Since then, we had a second public hearing on a Saturday morning here in the Lucille Conference Room. We had a number of people show up. It was a nice turnout, and we had a number of people ask questions, and I think everybody went away satisfied. With that behind us, we now have an updated program plan. The program plan should have been in your packet. I supplied it to Cameron last week. And it was updated just to reflect the dates of the public hearings. And basically, we're here tonight to answer any questions you may have and to ask for your approval to submit, for me to sign the plan and submit it to the Public Utilities Commission.
All right. Going to the council.
I attended the meeting on Saturday. I don't have any questions. I'm satisfied. Thank you.
I was also at the meeting, and it was a good meeting, well-attended, asked good questions, and I think everyone was satisfied. I agree with Lynn.
I'm well aware of this program. Like I said, I've used similar things myself. I think with the EverSource rates going the way they are recently and all the talk around that, this is very timely. So I'm glad, and the community was sufficiently satisfied with everything they had to say.
Interesting that you bring that up. I actually called EverSource today to find out, to get an actual rate. And if I have this rate, I think it's, it's going to be 10, 1040. So it's going from 820, 8258 to 1040 or 104 something. So when I was speaking to the EverSource person, I said, okay, I said, so that's 20%. She gave me all the other 695 this, but I said, okay, so at the end of the day, it's 20% August 1st. So I finally did get a rate out of her. It took a couple of calls to get a rate, though.
All right. So I'll accept the motion to, how do we, is there a wording that we need?
Yes, there is, as a matter of fact.
We did have a suggested wording. I don't know if that made it to the council or not.
Does, does the chair of the Utility Commission have the authority to sign the document going to the Public Utility Commission?
No. That would be me. I don't mind if he signs. I mean...
So you have the authority to sign it?
Correct. He certainly would have apparent authority if the council says, yeah, go ahead and sign it, and then, you know, we send it into the PUC. Not that fine of a point, but I think probably, yes. To answer your question, I'm the one who would...
So if I make a motion to ask the council to authorize the town manager to sign the Community Choice Aggregation Plan for presentation to the PUC?
Perfect.
I'll second that.
All right. So I have a motion from John, a second from Ron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Chair votes in affirmative. Proceed. Thank you.
And just as kind of a quick reminder, right now, I think optimistically, we're looking at Q4 for a program. We're allowed probably Q1 2025, looking more realistically right there. Moving down to the next step, thank you all. Mike, I'll get that document to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you for the hard work. For the hard work.
Absolutely.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Next, Gilcrest Road traffic update. So just a little history of that. As the chairman of the planning board, and one of the members comes forward. Last council meeting, the assistant town manager had addressed an item that the planning board had discussed at their meeting, essentially was the traffic regarding Gilcrest. The, when that was presented to the council, the council had pushed that back to the, to the planning board as, all right, provide, you know, help, help us come up with a solution, which they had at their last meeting, from my understanding. I don't want to take away from your presentation, gentlemen. Additionally, prior to this meeting at 5:30, or during the 5:30 Traffic Safety Committee, Mr. DeFrancesco presented, or spoke as a resident, but not on behalf of the planning board, regarding traffic going Gilcrest. So with that, if I left anything else, gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I was going to come in and basically say what you just said, and then introduce Mr. DeFrancesco to fill in the blanks here. So thank you very much. I think really the only thing missed was, not necessarily missed, but how did we get here? Started through a conversation on a site plan for Gilcrest Road, and we were looking at conditioning them, conditioning a stop sign through the site plan. Town staff did advise against that. I'm sure Mike can explain a little bit better than I would as to the reasoning behind it. And we ultimately came and said, well, okay, what can we do? And that brings us here tonight.
And if I can pause real quick, just as a reminder to the public and those who are watching, the council does have the, the reason why we're following this process is because the council has the authority to really close any road, open any road, make any changes or anything. So that's why we're here tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for interrupting.
No, not a problem. With me, Mr. D.
So, thank you all. So Tony DeFrancesco, One Cheshire Court, I am on the planning board. I am now speaking as a planning board member. Previous meeting an hour ago, I was not.
You're always a planning board member.
Always a planning board member, correct. So...
They don't get to pick and choose.
So, so just, just to, just to be clear and totally set the table, it needs to be understood that the planning board had a meeting a month ago or so, which approved two major projects for South Gilcrest Road. At that meeting, there were more than a dozen residents of that area, Tocana and Ross. More than a dozen. Tonight at Traffic Safety, there were a couple, including Senator Carson, who also lives on Tocana Road, gave testimony at the traffic study meeting. So they were, they were visibly upset with, for the fact that these two huge projects were going to be built. Unfortunately, as, as a planning board, we can only do so much based on state regulations and our local codes and regulations. So a planning board, for example, for the general public, cannot say, sorry, we don't like it, we're going to say no. Planning board can't do that. It has to be based on state law, local rules and regulations, and there's, there's also a concept of the landowner, who, don't forget, is a taxpayer, has rights as well. Those rights include having to follow the local rules and regulations. If they're putting in a project, meets all the rules and regulations, the planning board really has, has no choice but to approve, okay? So now that, now that I've set that table, we're in a situation where I promised that dozen people that I would follow up and go to the traffic study, and I did. And then also, at a subsequent meeting, we, there was a discussion by the planning board. If you remember, we sent you folks as the decision makers. The planning board set a unanimous vote to look at South Gilcrest Road. You all sent it back to the planning board and said, give us a suggestion. What do you, what do you want to do? There was another vote taken. It was also unanimous. This time, it was for a four-way stop at Gilcrest, Tocana, and Charleston. Thank you. And so that was the suggestion that was given. Now I want to be clear that you all have the authority to accept, reject, or change and modify. And it's easy for you to do that, because the planning board already tried to say to you, just, we want you to look at it and come up with some solutions. You rejected that the first time, because you needed a little bit more help. So the planning board, in its wisdom, did that. They chose that four-way. It's a natural 90-degree four-way. There's some problems with it, just like everything else. And it's also, I want to be clear too, traffic is going to be traffic. You can't stop the traffic. It was mentioned tonight that a lot of that traffic is probably, and I think that's a good guess. I didn't say it. A member of the general public did. A lot of that traffic is pass-through traffic. You can't stop it, but you can try to control it. At the previous meeting, I said it, and I'm going to say it again, I don't have a degree in engineering. I don't have a degree in traffic, but I have a PhD in common sense. And I know for a fact that if you put in a four-way stop sign, cars are going to stop if there's other cars there. I live on a three-way stop area, and I'm not going to say who it is, but a member of my family might roll through that if there's no other cars. I might have been in the car when that happened.
I might have been driving when that happened.
No?
That would be called an enforcement issue.
For the record, I was not the driver, and it was not the red car chief. So, so the point here is, the point here is, the, the, the situation is bad. Those folks cannot get out of those two roads and take a left to go north. Can't do it. Whether or not the traffic is going fast, too fast, or not, in this board member's opinion is not really the issue. What is the issue is having the ability to be able to take the left, because the car on your left stopped. And I think any reasonable person would say that's safer than if there was no stop sign there. Now, where do you want to put that stop sign? Do you want to put it at that natural, natural four-way? Do you want to put it at Ross instead? Do you want to put it, do you want to put it, and by the way, we're probably going to be back again. I'm not going to speak for the whole board, but there's going to be another four, natural four-way stop when the new development goes in on the west side of Gilcrest Road. That's the Apple Orchard side. There's going to be a natural four-way that's built there. There could be another good spot to stop traffic so people can get up, up the hill. Or in that case, coming from the other side of the road, be able to go down the hill to merge in. So that's where we're at. There are, there's, I know at least one person from the general public who, I don't know if this is a public hearing or not, that would, that would want to speak. If it's not, that's okay too, because it was ample time to chat at the, at the traffic study committee. But certainly, if you have any other questions, if you're trying to understand the intention of the planning board, if you're trying to understand the nature of what the folks in that area are, are experiencing, I can answer that, because we, we were at the meeting and listened to more than, more than a dozen people, which, which is a lot for, for a planning board meeting. So, so that's where we're at.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, if you may, may I be willing to pull up the GIS map, please, and just kind of show that intersection of Tocana and Charleston? Just so we, as the council and the general public, can kind of have a little better idea of exactly what the planning board is, is discussing. Okay. So that's, and again, I, I was present for the presentation during the planning board, I'm sorry, the traffic safety. I watched the planning board conversations.
So, so I will say that, I will admit that that's a little bit misleading, and it's okay. I'll come over here. It's misleading, because that's uphill a lot. Some of the testimony, John was, was at the first meeting tonight. He said it's a 6% grade coming down the hill. This is going up the hill, corner. The road does bank off to the side, where your car can say hi to that hydrant in the street sweeper that's right there, if you're not careful. The Ross Drive is a lot flatter.
Thank you.
The Ross Drive is, is a lot flatter, but again, it's a natural, it's a natural 90-degree four-way.
So there, so there was presentation, again, there's presentation at the planning board meeting, presentation at Traffic Safety Committee meeting. Council, what do you want to do?
Let me ask Mr. Wally a question, please. Dave? If we asked you to put a stop sign going east and going west on Gilcrest, how long would it be before it happened? Let's say we said yes to do it tonight, when could it, when could it happen?
North and south.
Yeah, on, on Gilcrest?
On Gilcrest, going north and south.
I'm, I'm sorry. I was thinking Tocana.
Well, we have, we have stop signs in stock.
My brain was doing something.
If directed, yeah. I mean, if directed to do so, you know, we can make it happen in a week, but...
How long do, I do have a, more of a...
You have to also, though, you know, that, that could be, the things should be in place. We'd have to bag them. We'd have to put out, you know, the ample notification and put out the message boards. Usually a two-week notification is usually at least 10 days, but two-week notification is pretty difficult.
But this is not a heavy lift?
Uh, no. No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief?
Love me or hate me, here it comes.
Chief?
Sir?
What would be the, what would be the initial education and enforcement plan?
Well, I'll get to that one in a second, if you don't mind. Can I just say, the reason why this has always been an issue, it's a cut-through. People are coming off the highway, they're going back to Windham or South London area. They skip 102, they rip down there, take a right on South Road, fly down there, bang a left on Chase, and they're home free. They skip all the intersections. So I think if you're going to do this, and I'm no engineer, I'm no Dave Wally, John Trotter, but I think that anything is better than nothing, right? When Mr. DeFrancesco talks about his PhD in engineering.
It was common sense.
No, but you have a good, it's clear. It's clear to me, engineering is a thing too. This, I think this would help with people rushing, and they'd probably keep them on 102. I think the issue, as was already established earlier, we're going to have accidents here with the vehicles in the wintertime coming down the hill. Think at the last meeting when you guys were there presenting, or the developer was presenting, the gentleman on the corner of Tocana, across from the cemetery, was saying the same thing. He can't go to his mailbox. We got Boston and Albany. I think the North Mammoth Road section's working. I know not everybody's in favor.
Could be my next question.
Yep. I think that, you know what? If you live there, you'll love it. If you're a commuter, you hate it. We're not going to please everybody. We heard that tonight. And unfortunately, the decisions that are made rest upon you, gentlemen. I would be okay with it. I think the police department could enforce it. And again, I think this is a cut-through. It's, it is what it is. They're coming down this way to avoid going down 102. They don't want to wait, so they rip down this road. We know from a law enforcement standpoint, this is one of them, just like Kendall Pond, they cut across there. Same thing. I can tell you all the ones in town. Same thing, I can tell you all the ones in town, and if you did this, it could help alleviate the problems that the residents have. Not every resident's going to love it. They'll come in here and say it's a dumb idea. I understand that too. But you can't have it both ways. You either put them up and we enforce it, or you listen to people complain and we do the best that we can.
So Chief, after we educate and we have to write citations, where does the revenue go?
Not one penny goes to us, it all goes to the state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no such thing as quotas, in case that was your next question.
No, no.
Did anyone have anything further for the chief?
I was just going to say, Tony, while I admire your PhD, I would like to hear from Mr. Trotter on this, just because he does have a degree.
He's already been on record, but his PhD wasn't in common sense. He has just a master's degree in common sense.
He's got a stamp.
Mr. Trotter.
He's got a PE stamp.
That's why I'm called Civil Engineer, Tony. Civil Engineer.
Mr. Trotter, good evening.
I disagree with placing a four-way stop there.
Thank you.
You're coming down Gilcrest Road at about a 6% grade, so not only in the wintertime coming down the hill, but going up the hill, you're going to have the same problem getting going from a stop condition going up the hill. Coming down, we're going to be replacing that guardrail pretty frequently. We do it now, you know. Again, I understand, again, the residents' concerns. I was at the meetings, I heard them all, but again, placing stop signs is not the way to slow people down. People get complacent on it. It was a totally different application in the village. You were trying to deter the people from going through the village. You're not going to deter the people going here, because then they're going to stop, then they're just going to punch it, because they lost, you know, some time. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So my thought is, if we put it up, and it doesn't work out, take it out. Might...
Might be able to take it out before the winter.
I guess I have some thoughts on this. I mean, sitting on the planning board, I hear a lot of traffic, not only on this road, but in other places in town. Sitting in traffic safety committee, sometimes I hear some complaints from residents. I think this is like the foundation of a house, when you have your infrastructure in town that are your roads, and I think these are things that we need to have a deeper look into. It's something that I've kind of passionate about and really been proposing. We need to do traffic studies and find out how we're going to plan our entire infrastructure of roads out for this town. And while this may address these residents, they could cut through on the next road down. They could back up, because some of the complaints were at the light at the end of this road. People couldn't get left because traffic was backed up, and they couldn't get out because traffic, a stop sign's going to increase that. I want to help solve their problem, but I want to make sure that we're doing this in a well-thought-out manner and in a systemic manner, where we're taking into account the entire grid of the infrastructure. So that's where I feel like we should not gut reaction on this and really look at everything. And I think it's going to address a lot of people's problems in town with a lot of places, but how, you know, what roads would need to be bigger, what roads would be, lots of different solutions.
If I may, Mr. Chair, not to respond directly to the need for a stop sign here, but I agree entirely with your sentiments, counselor favor. One of the things that is, that I think, you know, and I hear about this at least two or three times a week, I think you all hear about it at least two or three times a week, nobody's generally satisfied with the state of traffic flow and safety in town. I haven't met that person yet. And I do think we need to take a comprehensive approach that requires funding. And one of the things that I've been talking about a little bit is considering whether we create a traffic study, traffic improvement, traffic safety revolving fund or expendable fund, like we do for other infrastructure, town infrastructure, and we fund it every budget cycle. Because we don't have necessarily the resources for some of this, I mean, traffic studies are expensive, stoplights are expensive, but it would be nice to have the ability to do some of these things when we identify them. So I agree entirely with that and think it's something we should look at.
Yeah, I would agree with that as well. I mean, it's definitely something to discuss during the budget season. You know, I would encourage you to, you know, us definitely as a council, with partnership with you, to have more conversations about that. Sean, regarding, you know, this specific, I understand the need not to address every resident that comes in with a traffic, because, a traffic concern, because I think everybody could have a concern with, on any street, regardless if it's a feeder, or a side, or a dead end, or cul-de-sac, or what have you. I think what makes this, this specific one, unique, is the facts, as stated previous in the meeting, there's a development on the south end of, there's a lot of development south of 102, between south and 102. And specifically, the east side of Gilcrest, just by south, the Apple Orchards that was referenced earlier, as well as the one across the street. And I think that this is a cheap and easy, as our director of DPW had stated, an easy thing to do. And I think it would be, I don't want to say a Band-Aid, that's not what I'm trying to say, but I think it would probably help mitigate some of the concerns. I do have a concern, as John Trotter mentioned, with the traffic, with the slope and stuff. But I guess my thing is, why not try it and see? And also, work on putting together a more comprehensive plan on some of the other items and concerns regarding traffic. You know, Mike brought up a good point as well.
I'm just worried about those unintended consequences. That's where, I know we should look at something, I don't know if this is the exact one, and that's...
Go ahead, Dave.
Just to be clear, because I don't want to have any confusion between my answer and what John is saying. To put up two stop signs is, you know, a little bit of sledgehammer work and whatnot, some paint on the road. Do I agree with this being a four-way stop? No, I do not. There is a much heavier lift that potentially should be done first, which would be a new geometrical design of that intersection, so that it would be a safe four-way stop based upon speed and known speeds. So, I just hedge you on the side of caution about just putting up stop signs to stop traffic or try to, you know, put a pause. And if it upsets people, it doesn't work out, we take them down. You know, there's a lawyer in the room too, I'm not sure if it's a PhD or whatnot, but there's liability to that.
The legal doctor.
He's not our lawyer. So we're clear about that.
Yeah, so, you know, when you do things like that, you can't use the motoring public as a guinea pig. You better have a better answer for a lawyer if a serious accident happens there, possibly in the winter, that, "Oh, we didn't realize that was going to happen. We did it to make the people in the neighborhood happy, and that cost somebody a life, or some serious, you know, money with an accident, where the guardrail's taken out a bunch of times." How many times is too many before we have to replace that guardrail? Before we say, "Wow, we've spent $35,000 replacing guardrail over the last few months." Well, let's take the stop signs out. That's not a good application for stop signs. There's a reason why, you know, to use John, that he harps about the manual. And there's a reason there's the manual. And there's a reason that we have geometrical designs of intersections and grades, and you don't, you know, whether you're going uphill or downhill, there's a reason why there's no stop signs there. So, to just do the minimum, which is banging a breakaway, put a stop sign up, paint a stop bar, and let's see how it goes, I would be very cautious to the board about making that kind of decision at your level before, you know, you didn't thoroughly vet it out, or, you know, at least look at the engineering of that intersection and whatnot. So there's, I understand how some of the applications have been going, and we're hearing more and more calls for stop signs, but there's a common thread in a lot of all of this, and that's speed. Speed in town is a factor. Every single time we're talking about stop signs, speed is usually the number-one thing at the forefront of what people are talking about. I know there's a lot more volume in town, so we need to be careful about what we mean by when we say traffic. I think what we're talking about is volume. The volume is going to increase on this road. I've lived on this end of town for 25 years. I've seen the volume of traffic increase as well, as well as speed. And is the volume going to increase? Yes. Now, we have two new developments coming in up the top, and in my discussions with Tony, was, you know, perhaps that's the right area where it's a straightaway, there's no line-of-sight issues, there's going to be a new four-way stop there. Perhaps that's the area that's best served to put in its new construction, and you look at it from that standpoint, and that's where you create it. Does that provide you any relief downhill from there? I'm not sure, I'm not a traffic engineer. But that's where you use your, you know, summations from the reports to find out if that's going to give them the relief that they need at Tokonel and at Ross. And the other thing I would offer too, is that people talk about, you know, I've lived in town X amount of years, or two weeks, or whatever, and everybody's comfortableness of coming out of their neighborhood is certainly a lot different today than it was when they moved to town 40 years ago. Okay? We all react a little bit slower, we all maybe drive a little bit slower, our vision may be impaired a little bit more. So, it's not necessarily that they can't get out of those roads, because obviously they can. It may take them a little bit longer, it may be a little bit outside of their comfort zone, as it was not, you know, back, you know, 20, 30 years ago. And I'm not trying to be, you know, heartless here, I understand the concerns, but the roads are engineered and designed safe, but the volume has changed, and so yes, it does need to be looked at and addressed. But I get very nervous when I, you know, listen to us talk about just popping up stop signs, and let's see how it goes, and we'll react to whatever it may do. That's not a good way to do your traffic control plan, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, go back to the council, what do you want to do?
Well, based on all this, it's not that, I agree with a total traffic plan. I've agreed since 1999 when I joined the planning board. I agreed when I left the planning board in 2011. I agree today. It's been 25 years, we don't have a total traffic plan. In that time, we have rebuilt Page Road and the intersection up there. It was $250,000. Today, it's $750,000. So, maybe as, everyone, good points brought up about stop signs and everything, also a good point brought up about speed. Why don't we just lower the speed limit to 30 miles an hour?
That doesn't necessarily slow people down?
Well, they're supposed to go slower.
Yeah.
But it gives the neighborhood some relief. It makes it an enforcement issue, absolutely. It gives them some immediate relief, shows that we're paying attention, and then lets these projects come about and see if the non-common sense PhD engineers can come up with a better solution. These people are looking for some relief.
Yeah.
What's the length of road from South Road up to 102, do we know? Approximately?
Well, you can do that right on the GIS.
Yeah, I got it.
Could you go to themes and then go to topography, and you'd see the big issue?
I could only do one thing at once. The whole length of road to South Road, or to Tokonel?
To the intersections, .31 miles, .3 miles, three tenths of a mile.
From Gilcrest or?
From south to Tokonel.
Yep.
Is .310 some mile.
And that road, Gilcrest South, as it was called, is a mile.
A mile, okay. And what's the speed limit currently?
35.
35. I mean, we did it on High Range Road, we've done it on Litchfield Road.
Yeah.
The town of Hudson has done it throughout the entire town, except for state roads.
On High Range, it doesn't work. People do 50.
They used to do 60.
Okay.
I mean, you know, it used to be, sadly, it used to be worse.
It's down here, but this is the issue.
Anne. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I speak for a minute?
Please.
You know, when we were discussing this application, I can't remember if it's Boston Ave or Albany Ave, I think it's Boston Ave, that the exit to one of these developments would come out to, and we had discussed a four-way stop sign there as well, when the time had come. You know, I have to say, I agree with both Dave and John's concern about, you know, what's going to happen if we put a sign there, to your point, Sean, especially it being on a hill. I think ultimately what we're looking to do is get people to stop, to create a little bit of breathing room in between cars here. So, you know, would it be reasonable to say, when this development comes about, we put the four-way right there at Boston and Gilcrest, where you're very flat? You know, again, I certainly don't have a PhD, but a reasonable solution, and yes, it's not on Tokonel Drive, but it's still going to get traffic to stop, you know, 40% of the way through this road, instead of having the ability to drive at the same rate of speed from the north end of Gilcrest to the south end of Gilcrest. You know, would that be a reasonable solution? Is it reasonable to, in the meantime, put a three-way stop sign there and see if there's any alleviation in traffic? You know, to the Director of Public Works' point, it doesn't cost a ton of money to put up a stop sign and throw some paint on the ground, but I think to both of their points, they're going to feel much safer in a road condition that is like that, or they'll be more comfortable with it, where it's a relatively flat area than they will at what's essentially the base of a hill where Tokonel is. You know, is that a reasonable solution?
Boston Ave is roughly in the middle.
Yeah, it's like right there. It's probably 40, 45% of the way through that road.
I mean, what is the council's thoughts about lowering the speed limit and putting an intersection?
I'm fine with lowering the speed limit. I just think they need some relief. I've had many residents contact me that they're very upset they can't get out of their road.
I'd go with lowering the speed limit too. I don't, I'm not really in favor of just arbitrarily putting stop signs in, as both our town staff have stated.
So too low, John?
Live with whatever you guys want to do, they want some relief.
I would agree with the lowering. I personally would like to see an intersection there. I'm also willing to hear, to do some, get some more facts. I think we talk about that a lot from the DIAS's facts. I mean, Chief Bernard stated, you know, there is accidents there in that, on that road, in that, you know, that area, there always, there is. So yeah, so what do you need from us moving forward with just, and you mentioned the last traffic safety committee meeting, we need to revise ordinance.
Correct. So I think that...
To adjust the speed.
You need to direct me to prepare the regulatory changes to implement this change. I do think it's worth update, you know, looking at this traffic safety code, as I flagged in the traffic safety meeting, it's saying it was last updated in 2007.
Yeah.
My guess is that there are some roads here, there are some roads in town that are marked as 30 miles an hour that may not be on this list, so let's do an inventory, make sure we have this right, amend it to include the new 30 mile an hour limit on Gilcrest. But just understand that that is an ordinance change, and it's going to require the usual process before the town council.
Notice, public hearings and such. You need an emotional direction.
I'm sorry?
You need an emotional direction.
Nothing further. That's sufficient.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Order 2024-08, an expenditure from the maintenance trust from Dave Wally, Director of Public Works. Sir, good evening.
Good evening. The heat is taking a toll on some of our HVAC systems, specifically for the fire department. The rest of the building's been doing okay, gratefully. So...
Real quick, Dave, I'm sorry, never mind, please continue. My apologies. I thought you were on the other ordinances, but you're not, so please continue, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, we had an issue down at the south fire station, Station 2, where the 19-year-old mini-split system went down. We did some minor repairs, but within two hours, it was down again. And so, ultimately, due to its age and the old refrigerant R22 in there... And so ultimately, due to its age and the old refrigerant R-22 in there, we made the decision to change it immediately. Got a quote from Ian, and got them on it right away because of the heat that we're in and the portion of the building. It was essentially the core of the fire department, so I believe I included in your packets an email from Battalion Chief Camer on that as well. The effect it was having on that facility. And then, as luck would have it, on Friday, after I had already submitted this paperwork, we had an issue at Station One, North Station, that the motherboard on that twelve-year-old unit, which is a Sanio unit though, had failed. Costly part, estimated two to three thousand dollars for the part and then install. So we went ahead and had them prepare us a quote for replacing that one. And that one, though, is going to be a little less expensive. It is a four-ten A refrigerant line, so we don't have to replace the lines like we did in South Fire. So I quickly, like, since four o'clock today, just updated the packet, thanks to Cameron. So hopefully you have the correct amount in there. So for both units, we're looking for eighteen thousand, sixty-five dollars to replace both. One is done. I have not given them approval for the one at North Fire yet, but.
All right, so these, for the two AC mini-splits, one in North and one in South Station.
Correct.
Any discussion from the council? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to adopt order two oh two four dash zero eight.
So moved.
A motion from Ron, a sec from Sean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes on affirmative. Thank you, Dave.
And if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, too, I'd be remiss if I did not mention, I probably should have done this at the beginning of the meeting in a public comment. But we have a retiree. His last day is this Friday. His name is Bill Payson. He's a heavy equipment operator. He's been with our department as of this month, twenty-eight years of service with our department. He is the second most senior person in our department. And fairly private person, and so similar to what the police department just went through. But I just wanted to at least make sure that the council was aware. I've, you know, provided a nice certificate for him. And we'll have a small gathering with the DPW personnel this week. But I just wanted to thank him for twenty-eight years of service, so.
The council thanks as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Order two oh two four dash zero nine, expenditure of roadway maintenance trust funds, Director of Engineering, John Schrott here. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. This evening, I'm here to request the release of expenditure of up to one-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand dollars from the roadway maintenance trust fund. You may think one-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand dollars won't get us very far. It won't. We'll have other line items from our highway maintenance line items that we're adding to this, or adding this to those line items. So we're going to be expending about nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. About three-point-six miles of roadway that we're looking to shim and overlay.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion from the council? Seeing none, I'll take, accept the motion to adopt order two oh two four dash zero nine. A motion from Ron, a sec from Sean. John, thank you very much for the hard work that you're doing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Order is adopted or approved. All right, order two oh two four dash one zero, an order relative to withdrawal of the cable equipment capital reserve funds. Director of Finance, Mr. Campo, sir.
Good evening. Good evening. This is the school district's annual request for their eight-thousand-dollar appropriation. As you're well aware, we have the warrant article on the ballot that is for thirty-two thousand five hundred. Per our agreement with the school district, eight thousand of that goes to them. You will see the list of items they'll be purchasing with it.
All right, so you're looking for totally, as you stated, eight thousand. Any discussion from the council? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to adopt order two oh two four dash one zero.
So moved.
A motion, a second, from Ron and then Sean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes on the affirmative. Thank you, Mr. Campo.
Thank you, Justin.
Mike, I do need a copy of that to sign.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Resolution two oh two four dash two-two, establishing a fee schedule for photocopying and scanning administrative support coordinator, Cheerson Hildonan. Good evening.
Good evening. So I am actually not asking you for action on this this evening. For context of this resolution, we're planning to bring a resolution in front of you for a first hearing in August. But it's kind of two parts to it, so I wanted to start by putting this in front of you in the interest of transparency, in the interest of public getting, giving the public a chance to give some feedback on it. So as you may or may not know, the New Hampshire Legislature and Governor Snunu signed House Bill ten oh two this past June that goes into effect on August thirteenth. It permits towns to collect charges for ninety-one A expenses under a very, very specific set of circumstances. And as part of that, we're required to come up with a policy under which case we would charge. Now, that policy is what the, the second half of this that we're going to be bringing before you in August. So it's going to be all one policy, but as part of that standardized fee schedule for charging for ninety-one A things, we realize that it's not only ninety-one A situations where you need to create print, scan, photocopies, digitally transfer information for people. To give you some context, we had somebody come in when I was down in the clerk's office to Carol and basically insist to her that she plug in her personal flash drive and download something from the voting system onto it. And was like, well, Hudson and Raymond did it for me. And I was like, okay, here is our supervisor, the checklist email. Please contact her. There's a federal, there's a state fee schedule for this. We've also had people just simply ask for photocopies of large documents. And they're just, I just would like a copy of this. And so this resolution that we're bringing before you, it'll be, it should have said draft, and that's my fault. We wanted to kind of introduce you to the numbers, see what you thought before we presented a more final one.
So Cheerson, just so I'm of understanding, so there was a state law that was passed
Yep.
introducing fee schedules. You wanted to push this out to the public as soon as possible, create awareness.
Yep.
And, you know, there might be questions and stuff, and then come the August meeting, would be more of a formal presentation with first readings and such, public hearings and what have you. All right, so I, I mean, I don't really have anything beyond this as a council.
I'd just like to say, I'd like to suggest that maybe the first ten pages are free. You know, and then you charge after that. Like, if someone comes down here and they just want to get a copy of something. I mean, I would just suggest maybe there's a, you know, the first ten copies are free, or the first so many copies are free, and then after that, you pay.
What does the legislation say?
Yeah.
Is it completely?
Yeah, we have to be compliant.
Is it all or nothing?
So the legislation actually deals very, very narrowly with the number of communications, over two-hundred-and-fifty communications, you can charge up to a dollar. What this part of the fee schedule is really representing is when people want to change the form in which the information exists. And in truth, for example, for current ninety-one A requests, it would impact very little. But if somebody wants an electronic copy of a document that only exists in physical form, that's when this would kick in. Or if somebody wants a photocopy of a document that only exists in physical form, and they don't want to take a picture of it, they want us to make a physical copy, or if they want us to print out the entire request. So that's, and actually, that's probably a very, very narrow percentage of our ninety-one As now and moving forward. It just, and part of the reason we want to do this, so we want to be fair, and we want to be consistent across the board. We don't want to seem capricious. We don't want to seem unfair or discriminatory because we're not. We just really want to make sure that with these extraordinarily large ones, sometimes we get requests over a thousand, fifteen hundred documents that we're permitting, you know, the town to not pass that cost on to the other taxpayers.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, definitely. I mean, I think the two counselors brought up some valid points.
Thank you.
And we'll look forward to that presentation in August, Sean.
Another thought I've had on this, and this is just for consideration, I don't know, in context of HB ten zero two, it's something I actually proposed as an amendment as that was coming through, is geographically, I think the Londonderry taxpayer versus an out-of-state agency who wants a two-thousand-page document is two totally different things. And I think the information for our own taxpayers, I don't mind providing that information. But for someone out of town that wants to incur a cost on our taxpayers, I think that is a different situation.
Awesome. I will take those notes and we'll bring the final resolution before you. It'll have the same number on August twelfth, August, that's what's next month is? Yes, August twelfth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. I think you're up next.
Oh, you get lots of me for the rest of the meeting.
Assistant Recreation Director Doug Cole. Real, real quick, I should have mentioned this in public comment. I just wanted to thank you both really for putting in the effort for the playground. I know Vice Chair Combs had initially brought up some updates on the playground, do some public concerns and stuff. And both of you, and, you know, especially Doug, but I know you both worked on it. I wanted to personally thank you for the hard work that you did, getting it up to speed, working with, you know, our insurance provider to make sure it's safe, to finding reasonable rates to bring in and negotiating wood chips and stuff. And that really meant a lot to me as a taxpayer, but also me as a parent, as well as a counselor on the council. So thank you both for the work that you put in. I know that we had several police officers that were present, and we had the football team, the Londonderry High School football team, present. And what, how many yards of bark mulch was it?
So it was a hundred and fifty yards.
So a hundred and fifty yards, I believe it was a couple tractor-trailer trucks worth of, two tractor-trailer trucks worth of bark mulch. I do know we do have a resident that did spread out a lot of it through their Kubota or their small front-end loader. So thanks to that person who was asked to remain anonymous. Thank you for that work. And just greatly appreciated. So with that, we do have, we are looking for an update on Old Home Day, so I'll turn it over to you both. Thank you.
Actually, so I was gonna, I was gonna kind of throw the thanks back as well for the Volunteer Day that happened on Saturday. So, I mean, it was well represented not only by our department, by members of town council, Londonderry PD, as well as the Londonderry Police Association, as you mentioned, the Lancer football team, families here in town, our Recreation Commission, so we're very thankful and grateful. It was done in record time, which was amazing, too. Saved our backs, I'm sure, as the day went on.
Forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes.
I think I said, I think the quote that I said was, "Don't lift with your back, lift with your football, your Lancer football player."
No doubt. Seventeen of them showed up and, yeah, made it look easy, so. And just extended to Dave Wally and DPW for all the work they've done up there clearing out the entryway, the new entryway to the playground. And we're going to kind of make that a new special spot up there as well, so they've done a lot of hard work and it shows, so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, your presentation.
Okay, so we're just up here to talk a little bit about Old Home Day because the next meeting that the council has is the week of Old Home Day. So we wanted to make sure you all knew what was going on this year. This year's one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary of Old Home Day. Old Home Day was created in eighteen ninety-nine by Governor Frank Rollins as a way to attract the Hampshire's, as he said, sons and daughters back to the state to visit the town where they came from and celebrate it. Londonderry was one of forty-four towns to celebrate that year in eighteen ninety-nine and has been celebrating every year, that there has been one since. So it's a tradition that we're incredibly proud of here in the town. As you all well know, especially Counselor Farrell, who's been part of this for going on thirty years, if I'm not mistaken. So just a couple of quick updates. We are being extraordinarily careful with parking and on Saturday. So one thing we want people to know of early is that we've moved the accessible parking for Saturday across the street to the Methodist Church. We're going to say that often. We've moved it away from the Presbyterian Church, so we can keep that section of Pillsbury Road closed. We talked a little bit about traffic safety concerns earlier in the day. That was also a concern for Old Home Day as well. It runs from August fourteenth to August seventeenth. It is the themed blast from the past, celebrating the history of Old Home Day in Londonderry this year. August fourteenth, we have very familiar activities. We have the Senior Bingo and Barbecue. We have the Concert on the Common with the Beatles Tribute Band that the Arts Council puts on. And then we also have the LPA, Londonderry Police Association, Movie Night out here, and the movie this year will be If. Thursday, Battle of the Bands, Serge Bolo is running that again. And we have another event that Doug's going to talk about in a minute. And then Friday, we have another event Doug's going to talk about in a minute, a little bit shaky up there. And then we also have the Food Truck and Fireworks Show. We currently have almost twenty-five, we have twenty-four food trucks signed up with more coming in. So it promises to be just as enormous as last year. And then Saturday, we have events all day. The big ones, of course, are the Baby Contest, the Parade, the Booths on the Common, and, which is really a misnomer because it runs from the Lions Hall all the way down to the Historical Society, including a Touch a Truck that is going to be at Orchard Christian this year. We have one new event to go into that this year, and that is a dedication at Valley Cemetery at four-thirty on Saturday for the graves of the sons of the American Revolution. Grave Revolutionary Veterans by the Sons of the American Revolution. Sorry, that was a lot of words for eight-thirty at night. And special thanks to Dave Wally and Public Works for making Valley Cemetery look really nice in advance of this. And then, of course, the day ends with the Boots Scoot and Boogie and Brew Fest put on by John Mortimer as Millennium Running down at the Laffa Fields. So one thing I want to highlight for any of our senior citizens is that the Senior Bingo and Barbecue tickets are on, are available now for pickup at the Senior Center only this year, so go see Alona if you'd like them. I'm going to pass on to Doug to talk about our new stuff.
Thank you. So as mentioned, on Thursday, we're going to be adding a new event. We're going to be adding a color run, which is going to be open to residents of all ages and families. That's going to be taking place at Laffa as well. The race will take place from five-thirty to six-thirty. And it's going to be a quarter-mile course, so the map and more information will be going out in coming weeks. For all those families that are registered, it'll be available on the Facebook page as well. Registration is open online on our, using our myrec.com platform, so families can register there. They can also come by the office and fill out one of the forms if they wish to do so. There's separate fees for that, so it's either fifteen dollars per person or forty-five dollars max for a family, so. And they can, they can register right online, and we'll get all those names and everything collected, too. So we'll have a good idea of the head count. It opened on July eighth, so we actually already have a number of families that have signed up for that event. The deadline will be that day at five-fifteen, just before the race, so we'll have, we'll have a booth there, or a table as well that people can register for. That event will include a DJ, refreshments, and plenty of color packets that each individual will get on their own. So we'll have stations throughout as people go and run the course, for those that aren't familiar with a color run. And we encourage everybody to wear white so that it shows up, shows up the best when you're actually doing the actual racing course. And hopefully we'll get, get not only great photos, but a great time for everybody that does participate in that. On Friday, as I mentioned, there's a little bit of shakeup with the annual softball game that has taken place. This year, we're trying to host a softball tournament between four teams, so those teams are still coming together. We should have those finalized this week. Some of that has been up in the air as we're waiting for names and rosters to come in. So we had pitched the idea of a home run derby in case we don't get enough teams that do sign up, as well as the initial game that typically does take place each year. So that will be, that'll be posted as well, and we'll hopefully have some promotional material that goes out as we lead up and draw excitement, hopefully, for that game. And then, just in general, not only for the Saturday's events, but for the color run, we are always in need of volunteers. So anybody that is interested, we encourage them to reach out to us. They can contact us through the website, our online Facebook page. We do need them for the color run. We need them for Saturday's events, all the many things that we have going on. So anybody that's willing to help, we obviously appreciate it, so thank you.
So I will say, nobody wants to play against the police, and all of the police want to play. So it's no fun to tease them when they're not here, though. So do you folks have any questions for us?
John, I know you've been the liaison on the Old Home Day for many years. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I got a briefing on Thursday, so, other than what I shared with you guys, I don't really have anything else to.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions from the council? Good work to you and those are working on it, as well as John. Thank you for your continued dedication to make this amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, I'll accept the motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from John, a second from Ron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in public hearing. Folks, this is a public hearing. Resolution two oh two four dash one five, adoption of the New Hampshire two oh two four dash one five, adoption of the New Hampshire Paid Family and Medical Leave Policy. Mr. Town Manager, your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So these can really be considered together. The, I'm, I'm here on these items tonight because the council had the foresight to be one of the first municipalities in New Hampshire to adopt the New Hampshire Paid Family Leave Program. We are joining some of the other large municipalities and the state that offer this program. And the hope is that it will not only support our employees during, you know, the beginning of life, the end of life, and everything in between, with respect to protected leaves where there is not currently a wage replacement option. And some of those leaves are, for example, bonding with a newly adopted or a child that has been born. Protected leave under FMLA, but no wage replacement in, in certain circumstances. So this policy that I've talked to the council about before allows employees to opt in at a very reasonable premium. And in order to do that, we need the council to adopt the Paid Family and Medical Leave Policy, and that's twenty twenty-four dash fifteen. And then we need to make a slight tweak to our currently existing FMLA policy that just talks about how these leaves are handled. I'm happy to answer any of the council's questions. I guess the other thing I would, I meant to mention is, again, this allows us to treat our employees right, the way that they deserve. It also allows us to attract and retain quality employees. So it's one of those benefits that we can talk about, try to do that.
Any initial questions before I go to the public from the council? All right, folks, we're in public comment. Are there anyone that would like to talk regarding both of these resolutions, two oh two four dash two four, one five, and one six? Seeing none, we'll go back to the council. Can you?
I was gonna motion for approval.
Thank you. Can you have a motion for both at once?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll second.
So John has a motion?
I'm gonna motion for fifteen and sixteen.
All right.
I'll second.
Second from Ron. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. All right.
Close the public hearing.
Thank you. Motion to close and a second from John and Ron respectively. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair vote, no. Chair votes in affirmative. We are out of public comment. Old business remaining and amending the charge for the Lions Hall Study Committee to the Reverend Morrison Meeting House Study Committee. So just as a reminder for those who are in the audience and those who are watching, not to steer, steal Cheerson's thunder, but originally, the council, we, during our prior meeting, had this, a, a charge that we adopted. And just to remind you all, there was some conversation and some concern about, you know, some of the specifics in it. Maybe we should update, maybe we should revise. Decision ultimately from the council is move forward with this charge. And they have had a couple meetings since then, and have proposed some changes from, to the council for, for a name and charter revision, charge revision. So with that, Ms. Hildanin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So at the July second meeting, the Lions Hall Study Committee voted unanimously to recommend to the council that the committee's name be changed to the Reverend Morrison Meeting House Study Committee, to better reflect the historic name of the building. And so that is the request from the committee that I bring before you. And then I am also here asking the council what they would like to do, because as the chair said, you wanted to do some amending to the charge. So I'm here to find out what that, what you would like to do.
The, so I attended the meeting. A big part of the reason why they want to change the name is from a fundraising standpoint, to disassociate it from the Lions Hall and to reassociate it as the historic property of the town.
Yep.
Does anybody have the charge? I'll try to remember what the, what the changes were that they wanted to do. I didn't know I'd need to know that.
So the only change on the charge is the name, and then I am happy to make what other changes you so request tonight.
Is there any proposed changes that the, now the Reverend, Reverend Morrison Meeting House Study Committee?
So the main thing missing from here is, is that they, we need to figure out how to say this, is that the charge is to find the most economical path to put the building back in service. And we don't say that here anywhere. So we need to put something in here that says that the, you know, the charge and the expectation for October first is to come back with the most economical and efficient path to put the building back in service, and what that usage, the proposed usage will be. That's the main thing missing.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to amplify that, Counselor Farrell was at that meeting. I was at that meeting as well. I think there was a recognition that, you know, the committee couldn't do everything by October first, but the direction from the council was really clear that step one is to figure out how to, how to get that back in service. And, and that, so that was a lot of the conversation. I think the conversation also, Counselor Farrell, was just a recognition that this, this committee may well go on beyond October first. It does not necessarily go away on that date, but task one is to do that.
All right. So what do you need from us to, do you need us to vote on the adoption? Do you want to, do you need consensus?
I, I am happy to take a consensus on, on both, and we'll work that in.
I'm good with it.
The council was clear, the motion was very clear. So we can definitely work that in.
So putting in, and as the most important thing, as Counselor Farrell indicated, so after the first three tasks there, which are simply, which are simply formative, put the next line to be, find the most economical and efficient way to put the Reverend Morrison Meeting House building back into service, and determine its immediate future use.
Core functions or core usage.
Core, core usage for the immediate future.
It's a committee, not a task force, right?
It is currently.
I mean, just change it on the fly. We don't need to vote.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so that sentence is...
Just wanna make sure they understand what our expectations are.
Perfect. So I will amend that charge, and then post the amended charge on their page and change their name.
One thing I shared with them when I was at the meeting is, I told them, I said, we need to be careful not to turn this into a science project, and not into a historic project, because it is neither. It is that we need to find a path so that we can go to budget this year and know what to do. Because it, and I think the other thing I said to them was, is that every minute it remains closed, it deteriorates.
Mr. Chair, may I just ask the council if there's anything remaining on that, in light of focusing this mission? Is there anything in lines four through ten that you would like to strike or remove, that the council would like to remove?
I'm good with it.
I'm, I'm good with them.
I'm good with it.
Okay. Awesome. I will do that and relay it to the committee.
Anything else from the council regarding this?
No, I'm good.
All right. Thank you, Cheerson. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Approval minutes, June seventh, seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Council minutes, so I have motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Sean, a second from Ron. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative. Thank you. Liaison reports.
Okay.
You heard Old Home Day. We did? All right. Town Manager report.
Yeah, several items tonight, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Keeping an eye on the drought status. As the council knows, there is a drought ordinance that allows the council to institute restrictions. Right now, most of Rockingham County is unusually dry, but we're not in drought at the moment. So just wanted to report on that. Just to amplify some of the comments about the field day, I really extend my, my, my thanks to, to Cheerson Hildanin and, and to Doug Cole as well. You know, we, we don't do social media for its own sake. We do social media to reach the community, but it also provides us with data about what the community is interested in. And just as a measure of how that really resonated with the community, we had, in the last week, we've reached just about eleven and a half thousand people with our social media. That is largely made up with the Old Home Day, I'm sorry, the Field Day cleanup posts. So, social media strategy is working, but also, more importantly, the community strategy is working. So I wanted to highlight that. Speaking about interaction with the community, tomorrow is my second Town Hall event. First one was done at the Senior Center, to be able to reach folks who might be there or might be home during the day. This one is in the evening, six thirty tomorrow at the Leech Library. I'll field anybody's questions about anything. So I would encourage everybody to come down and hear a few updates that I'll provide, but then open it up for everybody's questions. I was really satisfied with the turnout, and the questions at the last meeting generated a lot of good feedback for us as well. As I reported earlier, Mr. Chair, members of the Town Council, we are essentially recording everything at this point in time. We're phasing in, as meetings come up, they're being recorded. Again, it's not instantaneous, but we did record traffic safety tonight. That's a significant milestone, because to my knowledge, that meeting has never been recorded. The, there were, there were a couple of comments made that I want to report on. You heard them too, Mr. Chair, because it really would be a, a council, well, to some extent, a council awareness or, or a council decision. One was the frequency of the Traffic Safety Committee meetings. The sentiment that was expressed was those should occur more frequently. I don't have control over that. I think, I'm not even sure the council has control over that. I think it's really up to the Traffic Safety Committee to decide if they want to do that. But I just flagged that for everyone's awareness. The, there was, again, discussion about the need for a Traffic Safety Committee liaison to the Planning Board and the ZBA. I'm not aware of anything that would prevent the Traffic Safety Committee from designating a liaison to attend and report back. If the council feels otherwise, let me know, but I will report that to the Traffic Safety Committee if that is their wish. Couple of other housekeeping items. There's a donation box in the hallway from Beacon Church. They are collecting supplies for teachers at Londonderry Schools from now through the middle of August. And I want to report on an item that has been pending for a number of years, and thank our IT staff, Doug and Tom, as well as Cheerson Hildanin, for providing a lot of administrative support for this. And that is that we have switched over a Town Hall and the library to Office three sixty-five. This provides not only better functionality, user experience, really most importantly, and the reason that I supported this, and I think the council supported it financially in the past, has been security, cybersecurity. And so one of the things that we're implementing along the way is two-factor authentication. That's really the gold standard when it comes to these things, and, and other features as well. So I'm happy to report that that project is just about done. We are now in line with the Fire Department and the Police Department. So all town departments will shortly be covered in that regard. And that is all I have this evening, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Anything else from the council? Anything else from anyone else? Seeing none. I'll echo my, my comments that I had at the beginning during our moment in silence. I think that our country is, is on its way to being divisive, and I see it not just federal, I see it state, I see it municipal as well. And I don't want to get on a soapbox, but I just want to say that I really do think that we are an amazing community. I think that we have amazing residents. I think we have amazing staff. We have amazing supporters. And I want to highlight that, and I want to work, us to work together collaboratively. And I think that we are doing that. We can always get better. So with that, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved?
I have a motion from Ron, and a second from Sean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Good evening.